Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the organizational meeting of the Cedar Springs Public Schools Board of Education. We'll start the meeting off with the pledge allegiance. If you'll please rise and place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first act in the organizational meeting is to go through the election of the officers. The board will be electing a president, a vice president, as well as a secretary and a treasurer this evening. Oh, yes, we do. So before we get to that exciting portion of the meeting, we are going to go ahead and take our oath of office. So if board members, if you could please rise and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and of the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of trustee of the Board of Education of Cedar Springs, Michigan, according to the best of my ability. If you're in agreement with this oath, you may respond aloud by saying, "I swear." So the oath has been issued and taken by each of the board members. We can now transition into the election of officers. So the election of officers shall be by a majority of the full board, where no such majority exists. The first, on the first ballot, then a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of ballot votes. Except for those appointed to fill up a vacancy, officers shall serve for a period of one year and until their respective successors are elected and shall qualify. So the first position that we will be voting for is for the president. A school board president presides at all meetings of the Board of Education. In the absence of the president, the vice president shall act as the chairperson of a school board meeting. The president of the Board of Education shall again preside at the meetings of the board, perform other duties appropriate to the office of president, assure that deliberations will be fair, open, thorough, but also efficient, timely, orderly, and to the point. Attempt to achieve full resolution of matters before the board wherever practical. Prosecute actions brought by the school district and defend on behalf of the school district in all actions brought against the district. So are there any questions about the office of president? Okay, at this time, I'll take nominations for the position of president of the Board of Education. Okay, nomination by Shannon, second by Misty. Third by April. Are there any other nominations for the position of president? Okay, I'll call for discussion.
She's done great so far.
Been a phenomenal leader for the board and very organized, finally, just all of all of what president should be. So thank you for doing it for many years.
Yes, she's invested a lot of hours behind the scenes and just very faithful and dedicated, so.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Having none, I'll call the question for president. All in favor of Heidi Reed as serving for the 2023 school year as president of the Board of Education, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, it is unanimous then. Heidi Reed is the president for the Board of Education for 2023, and I will pass the gavel and responsibility of the meeting over to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that bold confidence, and again, I'll do to be honest as best I can.
I think you're gonna need to speak up because I can't hear you real well, and I know they can't.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep going with the same spirit you've talked about with your All right, so we'll continue on for the election of officers. The next office we have open is vice president. All right, so for vice president, a school board vice president performs duties of the president if the president is not available or eventually attends. Vice president of the Board of Education shall preside at meetings of the board when the president is not able to attend, perform other duties appropriate to the office of vice president as the board determines, which for us has landed in potential a policy and upper position. So I would end, open the nominations for a nomination for vice president.
But nominate Matt Schoffer?
We have a nomination for Matt, and we have a second for Matt. Trent needs the motion and Jan is second. Any other nominations? End of discussion.
That is also done a great job.
You know, sometimes ears get a little red when he's listening.
You're always on policy stuff. You were ready to change the policy, and that's great, that's it.
Yeah, but I tend to rely on the Okay, any other discussion? So I would call for all those in favor for Matt Schoffer as vice president, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. It's unanimous for Matt Schoffer for vice president. Moving on to secretary. The secretary for the school board will sign board minutes, take roll call at every meeting, and perform other duties as requested by the board. The secretary of the Board of Education shall sign the minutes of the meeting, orders, resolution, and other proceedings of the board in proper record books, record minutes, proposed sessions, and work sessions, reform other duties required by the law or by the board. I would open up the floor for nominations for the position of secretary.
I nominate Tracy Slater.
Any discussions?
She'll ever have my name on.
And she does double check me. I appreciate that. So having enough for the discussion, I will, all those in favor of Tracy Slater for the position of secretary, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. None? Thank you, Tracy. So for our last decision for this evening is for treasurer, and by definition, the treasurer reviews the financial activities of the school districts and shall perform duties of the board made prescribed in its bylaws, relationship to the administration of the school district funds. So at this time, I would open the floor for nominations for treasurer for the Board of Education.
I nominate treasurer.
We have a nomination and a second, and we'll open it up for discussion.
He always has good questions for Matty, so finances are on the finer.
And we'll be thankful for Trent as the treasurer, so we don't have to Yes. I know you're thoughtful about it, and you're watching, and you're thinking how the stakeholders would might be thinking if they were looking at a plan for it. All right. So for the office of treasurer, for Trent Gilmore, all those in favor, if you would signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. And it's unanimous for treasurer. For treasurer. All right, thank you.
I'm sure you asked me to say same side. If you can say aye to no.
Yes, I guess so.
I was just wondering. I didn't want to say no to anything, but I thought
Yeah.
Seems like we've learned today.
Yeah. All right, so at this time, we're going to sneak back to let's get a roll call in a minute, and as our newly elected secretary.
Yes, trustee Bowser here, trustee Patton here, trustee Vanderheide here, treasurer Gilmore here, secretary Slater here, vice president Schoffer here, president Reed here.
Thank you, and we have established a forum for the meeting. So moving on, our organizational business. For the first item, we have the regular meeting schedule, which has been put before us for the rest of 2022 and going into 2023. Do you have any comments, Scott, or?
So there are a couple of Thank you. There are a couple of, typically, we go second Monday of the month for our regular board meeting, and then we have four work sessions scheduled. One is in August, one is in October, one is in February, one is in June. The work sessions typically are scheduled on the fourth Monday of the month, and you'll notice that we follow that pattern with the exception in the month of August. In August, we're asking or we're proposing that the board meet for the purposes of having a meeting slash work session on the third Monday of the month. So that would be August 21st, and the purpose of that meeting really is just to approve any hires that we do before the first day of school. We anticipate schools starting sometime during that week of August 21st. Then the second variation in the calendar occurs in the month of April. The, according to the common calendar adopted by Kent County, the April 1st is a Monday, April 8th is a Monday, that's when we should be meeting as a Board of Education, but that's the week of spring break for Kent County. So the proposal asks for you to meet on the third Monday of April, which would actually be April 15. All of the other recommendations, all of the other proposals are in line with things that we've done, things that we're doing this year.
Will you be sending out invitations through the email like you have before?
For the, yes, yeah, to all staff?
Or? Oh, no, you said something.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
One question that's posted out here on Cedar Springs website, so everybody can see what the meeting dates all the way up.
Correct, yeah.
And I waited to post my calendar until we pulled it on. All right, thank you. We'll move forward to the designation of the person to post a meeting notice, and it makes sense to have somebody that's here during the day because we have other jobs. So the person that's being delegated or that task would be Amy McCarthy, communications specialist. Official depository of school funds would be independent bank, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, Huntington Bank, Bank of New York, Mellon, and US Bank. Names will be tagged. Any questions on that? The signature card authorization, designate signatures of the following individuals, superintendent, director of business and finance, which is Matty, president of the board, and treasurer of the board. So we're sitting fine with that. For the district legal counsel, Clark Hill Law Firm, and for negotiations, personnel, and other school legal concerns, Tefol Law Firm for construction contracts, and Tru Law Firm for school elections, personnel, scheduling, education, bond counsel, other consultants. Any questions or thoughts about those? District Financial Auditor. We, the proposal is to retain Brede Bell and Hatt. And then it has been our tradition that we appoint a recording secretary, so it doesn't take away from deliberation at the board table, and I believe we're appointing Barb Gust for that position. Or in her absence, she'll delegate it. All right, any questions? Regarding any of that?
No questions, just a comment. Thank you, Barb, for agreeing. Thank you.
Thank you, we're taking the minutes. Okay, all right. So for the agenda, we have, next, we have action on our traditional organizational items. And if it pleases the board, I would like to call it as one motion. So I would entertain a motion for as presented for action items A through G for Board of Education operations.
Ooh, support.
Any discussion?
No discussion, can I just read to confirm what we're, what we got? The regular meeting schedule, the designation of person to post meeting notice, official repositories of school funds, signature card authorization, district legal counsel, district financial auditor, and appointment of recording secretary, which most of those remain the same except for the meeting schedule, honestly.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, I'll call the role, vice president Schoffer. Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, items are approved as presented. Well, now we have the adoption of the agenda. So the agenda of going into rest of the board meeting of the business of the district. So I would entertain a motion for as presented. End of discussion. Having none, vice president Schoffer.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Trustee Gilmore.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Treasurer Gilmore, sorry. Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is approved. That brings us to gratitude, and I would open it up to the board, and I would like to go first. I'm very much appreciating our district plans are up and twinkling, and they have graphics and events, and they're quite eye catching. We made it through construction, and they're up and running.
And it was just some minor issues of programming that were preventing us from
Those darn computers.
I know.
Well, they look great.
All ones and zeros, binary code.
I'm grateful to have April here, with his voice on the board.
I'm grateful for the community that came in to help get our kids that contract and get the negative out of our school and enforce the policies there. And I'm also grateful to Heidi because she's done nothing but helped me through this whole process, like from the very get-go, so thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome, welcome.
And I just wanted to show gratitude and thank officer Rowe. I think he's kind of in the doorway, maybe there, I don't know if he can hear me. But it's law enforcement appreciation day, and so I just wanted to recognize officer Rowe and just appreciate all that he does to keep our school, all the buildings, the districts, the safety is so important to everyone, and so just appreciate his hard work.
We, while we, as a district, while we appreciate your work and your service every day, January is Board Appreciation Month, and so we just wanted to make special acknowledgement and accommodation of the work that you're doing on a regular basis. I was trying to add up the hours that you put in per month, and between the, this regular meeting, work sessions, between the barrage of communication that you get, all of the educational readings that you are needing to do in order to fully execute your position, and then all of the classes that you take in order to become more versed on how to become excellent Board of Education members, it tallies between 10 and 15 hours a month. And so for that, on behalf of the students and the staff of Cedar Springs Public Schools, we want to publicly thank and show our appreciation for you and your service as the Board of Education. So thank you.
Thank you. We are at our high school representative, and I think we have Emily Mayer with us. Want to come on to the podium and share with us what's going on in your high school?
For those of you who didn't hear personally read, I am Emily Mayer. I am the senior council president, representing the student council. As some of you may know, it is not a very busy time, the student council, during the winter. But as a review of 2022, we had the holiday hallway decorating the week before freaking break, and I went very well, I think students very much enjoyed that. A lot of work was put into the student council. Yeah, I think students liked the holiday cheer that was in the hallways with the teachers who decorated the doors. Also fun competition with the teachers. Looking ahead for 2023, the student council is planning for March's charity month. This year, rather than having each council do a charity, the whole council will be doing city impact, so that way we make it more donations as a whole, rather than splitting up donations to three different charities. So we're planning that, so I'm hoping that because of that, we'll receive more donations from the school. And I think that's it for 2023. And then senior council is planning graduation, and then this year, we're actually in the graduation committee, rather than just the senior council doing graduation. We're hoping that that hands out the better. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay, next, item 11 are consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented. I'll call the board, vice president Schoffer.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton. Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, consent items are approved as presented. And next, we have a closed session pursuant to the open meeting at section 8B for student discipline, and I would entertain a motion to move into closed session. Any discussion? Having none, vice president Schoffer.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, we move into closed session, and we'll return in Okay, so we'll roll back into open session at 7:57. And we're moving on with the agenda. We're going into discussion for A, Italy Art Trip to Poole for the spring break of 2024 with Jen, and this is our second read for Poole.
Indeed it is. So you will remember that Amy Brumwell, our art teacher from the middle level, was here last time to present this opportunity for families to take advantage of a trip focusing on art in Italy. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about that. And that will be on for action tonight. Amazing. I know, I'd like to go to Italy.
Yes.
I know, very good, thank you.
All right, moving to discussion item B, the Michigan Association Student Council Honor Society 2023 Student Leadership State Conference Overnight Trip Request. And this is Jen and Todd presenting.
That's correct. So our student leadership group would like the opportunity to go to the state conference. This is held in Grand Rapids this year at the Amway Grand. It is a long weekend experience for them with students across the whole state coming together. And because of the timing of this one, we are hoping to discuss and to take action tonight, even though this is your first read on this. They will be traveling with the student, the advisors of the student leadership group to the Grand Rapids area and spending the night there. I understand there's quite a lot of good networking that happens among the students in terms of their leadership opportunities.
And it's a combined group between student council and honor societies. And so I know it's just down the road, but the reason for the overnight request is to give them that full conference experience. Think back to when you were in high school, it would be a whole lot more fun to stay at the conference and take it all in than to drive home and then drive back. So that's why we're asking for the overnight opportunity for our students.
Do they have the option to drive back? Like if the funds aren't issue.
I don't believe they'll be driving themselves back. I believe they'll be going together as a group. So I would have to ask Todd about that, I'm not sure.
And then, do they know where they will be staying?
They'll stay at the Amway, yes, they are. Quite an experience.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Move on to item, discussion item C, middle level elective course proposal with Jen presenting.
And this again is a second read on this one. You might remember that I presented on this at the last meeting about two middle level electives that were hoping to run for fall and into the future, and they are quite future focused. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that have arisen since the last time we talked about this.
The high school course proposals.
And that is also me. So at our last meeting, we heard a proposal on computer science for AP students, agriculture, and natural biology resource, environmental and natural resource management. So all three of those as offerings in the course offering guide, that doesn't mean they'll run. It will be dependent upon the master's schedule and what students sign up for, and then what we are able to staff. So all three of those new possibilities for our high schoolers.
Moving on to discussion item E, financial update with Mike. Moving on to discussion item E, financial update with Mike. And just so the board knows, we're going to both of the budget amendment, we're going to be doing that, so we'll see that in February. Everyone big with kids in February. Have you got that? I don't think you. Financial update, your expert advisor.
Oh, thank you for giving me the.
No.
That might change that. Appreciate that. Financial base update, hopefully you've had a chance to review the documents that have been uploaded. As I explained previously, the general fund budget act will. Kind of start of the school year does lack a revenue new lag behind our expenditure, so um that is once again the case. We will be doing some federal draws. This month, so that will close that gap a little bit. Coming to uh create any of that flags. That's the difference between our revenues recognized and part of our expenditure. Any questions on that? At bases to current fund project. Right now, we are. Cash flow progression, we have us fully spending our funds. Our liquid funds. Invented and will return in May, June, so those funds are not available, but. Seriously. So. Um, and in March, early April, we will have a thirty. Very four, thirty-five million dollars available. Uh, last month, I mentioned we did a food service RFP for a uh ambient oven at Cedar View. Those proposals were due on February twenty-first, we only. One proposal prior to the deadline, um, and that proposal was actually. Add two separate pages with the pricing, so we will. So this new RFP. Uh, later, we try to get additional proposal to make the best selection. We also did select. Stifle to be our. On underwriter for the upcoming series two issuance, that was based on the two proposals that we received from stable one month. Uh, stable was usualist, qualified bidder. And their their pricing is based on estimates, but based on the proposal submitted. Was the best value for. Tax payers of Cedar Springs. Uh, then the second. Now, I also included the scheduled events for the fine. Series two improvement. Right now, we're on the second date, we believe the uh adapting the operating resolution to uh issue those funds. So we'll discuss. The order of the the next. On the agenda. Any any question?
Carry forward.
Alright, I believe most of you have probably seen uh. The resolution like this in the past, when we did the series one issuance or any of the. On uh refunding issuances, uh, this is just a formality, it is a resolution by the board to authorize the school district to issue. The series two construction. The dollar amount is up to thirty-five point seven million dollars. Really is, it's a twenty-one page document that we need, that is. Twenty-three pages, that is really a formality. Um, and one of the next step in the process. Any questions on this resolution?
That's good, Jen. Okay, that brings us to the portion of the meeting for public comment, and this is the time that the board would hear public comment um for three minutes. If anyone has anything they want to share with the board. Um, and we won't be answering your dialoguing with anyone, so don't feel bad about that. Mister Smith will be following up, do we have any requests or have a comment?
Questions?
Alright. We'll move into our action.
And I know we, I was looking at my computer when I did, but I didn't realize with the eleven D. Actually, we're not down on months, because we have down on months on ours.
Yeah. I, it's because uh when I ran the agenda on Friday night, uh, it didn't have the actual amount in. And I printed my copy from Friday night, made copies for the meeting tonight, uh, instead of. Print making copies of the updated agenda, so it's it's correct in board book, it's just not correct on the copies that I. Shared, yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Correct.
So for transparency, that dollar amount for eleven D was. Three million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand and four hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. I just wanted to, for those who sense it's not on the.
Thank you.
That our audience has, I want to make sure that you were transferred.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Treasurer Gilmore. Okay, so for action, our first action item is our student discipline for student twenty-two, twenty-three, oh three. And the task put before us um for us to um hold on and deliberate is if the evidence. Is sufficient um to discharge and the result. That policy about. So. I would entertain a motion.
Yes, student two-two, two-three, zero-three, a permanently expelled from Cedar Springs public schools.
We have a second. Is there any discussion without any identifying language?
I would say this one is very difficult. Um, it's not. That was clear. But because of all the. Apparently, why I asked the question earlier, are. Is this part of the uh rest, like restore. Process. His response and answer. Mind me, so. Yeah, it's definitely not. There about one, but.
The motion in a second, so. No further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Patton. Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carried. The next action item is the Italy art trip proposal for spring break twenty twenty-four. And our second. Okay, since connection, I would entertain a motion, so.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
Reed, yes, motion carried. Action I M C, Michigan Association of Student Councils and Honor Societies. Date conference overnight trip request, I would entertain a motion.
So. Support.
Any discussion?
So I very much like. The idea of us, um, I think I was a part of. One of these for that one. I wasn't else here, so. I'm glad it's it's coming back for now. We're getting out there to do it. Uh, some of the things that I did see, some sources at one time. Just want to make sure it was clear, it was a one and twelve chaperone ratio. Um, do we know how many students are supposed to be?
Right now, we have approximately six, it's between about fourteen and sixteen, we just have to slip by commitments.
Okay. And um, do we know total cost, I saw kind of some question marks on there for.
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on those commitments, because.
Sure.
We can double them up in a room. Rip them up, but it depends which net, you know, nail females commit, so. That's why we don't have slip by cost, if, because the cost varies, do that, but you know, the rules maybe.
Will there be secure, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Will there be security higher for overnight?
Security higher.
Well, like when we went to Disney World, like the chaperones that attend the running, because there was a security guard to be in the hall.
These are. These students that we see as some of the greater leaders in our building, we're going to be recognizing this in front of what, two thousand others.
They got formal ones just like the other heads.
I mean, that's what the chaperone is there for. And I'm going to be one of them. We're gonna, we're trying to figure out, slip by the day, it could go over three days, so I mean, that's that's what we're there for.
This is one night, correct?
For three days, I think we're.
Just to call for my question, when we do these trips, we don't use, do we do security in the halls of those hotels?
Um, that's usually supplied by the company that's sponsoring the trip in most cases, so for example, the Italy trip, those kinds of things, they include that as part of the trip. Um, on the east coast trip, the chaperones provide that service.
We've done both.
Yep. So it's one night, so thank you for not sleeping. Thank you for not sleeping, it's one night. Alright. Okay.
Call for go.
Alright.
Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
We're still with security, but yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carried. Action item D, middle level elective course proposal, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
For. Any discussion? Having none? Going on order, hard for me. Justice Bowser.
Yes.
Justice Patton.
Yeah.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carried. Action item E, AP computer science high school course proposal. Entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Excited that I, that anybody can take it, not, it's not necessarily just AP, I hope that gets marketed well to all kids, but I know Mister Simmons heard that. Lot of threes last time, so there we go.
And the class offerings are really exciting, so I'm, I'm, I thought they did a nice job presenting on the cross board, so it's nice to give our kids more.
Alright, here we go. Justice Bowser.
Yes.
Justice Patton. Justice Vanderheide, yes. Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Vice President Schopner.
Yeah.
President Reed, yes, motion carried. Agriculture and National Resources Biology High School Course Proposal, I'll entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved for board.
Any discussion? Having none? Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Patton.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carried. Action item G, Environmental and Natural Resources Management. I'll entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved. For.
Question? Having none? Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Patton.
Yeah.
Justice Bowser.
Yeah.
President Reed, yes, motion carried. And last action item for this evening is the twenty twenty-three School Building Insight Fund Series Two Resolution. I'll entertain a motion for as presented.
For the board.
Yes.
Let's table action on the page.
Yes.
I'm going to table action on the page.
Right, with, are you with the spark?
Yep.
Okay. Any question? All in favor, say aye. Alright, table. So back to the school building and site funds, as presented is on the table, then we have a.
So moved as presented.
Okay, for. Question? Having none? Justice Bowser.
Yes.
Justice Patton.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Alright, that's mouthwash. Have that done, a lot of work, thank you. More work for you than that, so that's all good. So communications, um, from, thank you for your service. You don't have any outstanding correspondence? April is doing a great job of trying to figure out which classes when and what she does, but it's working out.
So I know there's a game on, even though the wrong people are playing in it tonight, but uh, three things real quick, one, um. In your Red Hawk Weekly from Friday, I made note of a uh boot camp from the school board finance boot camp that's going to be. Um, put on by the team at Kent ISD, Chris Glass is uh just a a really solid. Very engaging uh speaker as well as Kevin Phillips, so I'm gonna go. Uh, I'd love for any of you to join me if you're interested. Uh, if there's interest, maybe we could grab some dinner uh ahead of time before we actually go to the boot camp at seven o'clock, but. We'll let the group uh make that determination. Two things on the facilities front. Uh, is it February twenty? Oh, I don't remember what I had for breakfast tonight, so um, it might, might be February twenty-fifth. I'll send out another email. Oh, so then it would not be the twenty-fifth. Uh, but. Yeah, I'll double check in just a minute. We're uh completing our first week, or we've completed our first week uh with students and staff. In the building with our facilities team uh. Running the show, and it's uh the feedback that I've gotten from the building level, maybe Dan, I don't know if you've heard anything else, but it's been super positive. Um, the teams were in today, Dan led a orientation for that group and uh Matty was there and the team from finance was there and um. It it's just, it's just been neat uh to see their energy and excitement and enthusiasm. So we're excited for the trajectory of that uh of that team's mission. Um, I shared with them that we've all got the same job. You know, like our job is to create conditions in which our students and staff can thrive, we all have different tasks, but we all have the same job. Um, and so it, we're excited to see where that team goes. Um, and then I I don't know if you know, but I'm a math major. Um, sometimes you can actually add by subtracting, so um back in the spring. Uh, we eliminated two um really janky um. Out outbuildings, pole buildings, spaces behind uh Red Hawk. That were used by our maintenance team, but were also used by our ag science team, so I'm happy to report that we've uh. So I'm happy to report that we've uh, solidified a builder and we're going to get started uh, this spring on replacing that ag science building uh, up on that space uh, between, as I shared uh, about a year ago or so, that's that field area between Cedar View and the high school. Um, so that's going to be a, a new ag science space. And then we're going to transition the current ag science uh, crop area at the middle school into soccer field. So it'll be a win-win. Um, but we're going to, we've been utilizing student uh, feedback uh, from the ag science group and from um, from FFA on the design process for the buildings. Uh, we're also going to be working on uh, getting their uh, greenhouse up and running as well. So uh, there's some addition uh, after following some subtraction uh, that we're really excited about for the spring.
And that's. Is that the space great, kind of right behind where the community garden is?
Yeah.
Is that community garden going to mean, is going to, is it going to stay there or is it going to be eliminated as a result?
Up to the ag science group.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're not.
I think they could.
Space, we're building behind it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they, those two things could go hand in hand. But it, the, the egg science building and the uh, greenhouse will be up on the area where the field is. But we want to maximize the planting area as well, so that's where we're going to utilize some student input and uh, have them do some problem solving with us as well. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, so for planning our next formal meeting is February thirteen, forty-five, right here. Um, don't see any reason why we need discussion before that, but always going to call in case we do. And having no further business before the board, we will stand adjourned at eight twenty-three.